At 6:00 PM to order, please join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suzanne, would you do roll call, please?
Commissioner Levy?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Bonjo?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Thank you.
Do we have any agenda modifications?
We have no modifications to the agenda, but there are several supplementals on the dais. There are supplementals for item F1 of the Mad River Horticulture use permit, for item F2, the Spruce Grove Farms LLC, I believe that's a use permit also. For H1, there are actually a total of three supplementals. I think the first and the third you currently have, we have a second one coming, the second one includes more public comments. And we have a supplemental for, or two supplementals for item H2.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll open up the mic to public comment. This is for any item that is not on the agenda tonight, so if there's anything you would like to address, the commission that is not on the agenda, this is your time. Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we will move to item number E, which is, uh, thank you, is election of officers for this year, and we will elect a chair and a vice chair, so.
Well, I will speak to that item. Thank you, uh, okay. Yeah, it would be good to formalize the positions of chair and vice chair. Uh, even, oh, we now have Melanie here, okay, good. So at least we have five commissioners. But I just wanted to say, you know, Alan, you've been the vice chair for the past year or so, you've been on the commission since before I joined, we've served together for about five years. Even though we've often, or at least sometimes, been on substantively different viewpoints on these, on the projects and issues before us, I just want to say that I've always, I've never found any disagreement with you on matters of process, procedure, fairness, civility, and all the things that I think a chair is important to, you know, implement or stand for. And your chairmanship in the past year has been thoroughly competent, and I think that the duration of time on the commission matters in terms of just knowing how we do things. So I would nominate Alan Bonjo to be the chair of the commission.
I'll second that.
Any other comments on that? Do we want to do both as one, vice chair as well, or do a motion for each?
You have a motion and a second right now, so I would go with that.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I also think you're doing a great job, Alan.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, guys, I appreciate that.
So I'd like to nominate Noah as the vice chair coming up, since he's the next longest running commissioner here, that's regularly here as well. And I can say the same things, Noah. You know, I, we don't always agree, but process is good, and I think you would make a fine chair at some point, too. And substituting then when Alan's not here, so that's why I'm nominating you.
Thanks, Mike.
Great, we have a motion, do we have a second for that?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Noah, we are a vice chair. That was easy. So now we'll move to the consent agenda. I'm gonna go through it like we always do and see if anybody in the audience or any commissioners would like to have anything polled. The first item is Mad River Horticulture LLC conditional use permit and special permit. Would anybody like to see that polled from the consent? Seeing none, we'll leave that on consent. Item number two, Spruce Grove Farms LLC conditional use permit, special permit, lot line adjustment, and merger. Anybody here to speak on that? Seeing none, that will stay on consent. Number three, Seth Glasson, conditional use permit. Anybody here on that? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. Number four is County of Humboldt General Plan Conformance Review. Anybody here to speak on that? Seeing none, we'll leave that on consent. So that leaves everything that was on consent, on consent. So, um, that brings us to public hearings, and the first one...
I think we need a motion and a vote on that.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve the consent?
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, John. Moving on to section H, public hearings, and the first one is All Points Outdoors Incorporated special permit for reconstruction of legal non-conforming billboard. We'll give staff a second to get set up.
So we're here to talk about application number 16029 for All Points Outdoor Incorporated So the application is for a special permit to authorize repair and reconstruction of a legal non-conforming structure that was blown down in the November windstorms. The structure has been around since the mid-'50s and is currently fallen down in the wetland, and the applicant is proposing erecting the billboard with no substantial changes to it. The project will take about two to four days to reconstruct and about three to five people. The repairs propose to limit ground disturbance through ongoing use of peer-imposed foundation and also for replacing only three to six of the support posts and retaining, retaining six to nine of the support posts. The project is located between the US 101 and the Elk River south of the city of Eureka. It's on the east side of the Highway 101. The zoning and land use maps for this area are a little bit hard to interpret as they don't show private land between the two areas, but with closer review of the maps, we were able to distinguish that it appears the public facilities area is within the highway right-of-way, and the surrounding areas are AE agriculture exclusive with the natural resources area being confined to the river channel, as you can see on the slide and the maps for the parcel. The Humboldt Bay Area Plan is the local land use plan that is pertinent to this area as the general plan has not been adopted by the coastal commission. With review of the land use zoning, the land use designations as well as the zoning, agriculture exclusive is the most fitting, however, the existing structure does not, would not be normally permitted in agriculture exclusive. It is, however, considered non-conforming. Billboards are not authorized in these zoning districts and only permitted within commercial and industrial zones. The sign does not meet yard setbacks as it is just outside of the highway right-of-way, and agriculture exclusive would require a 20-foot yard setback. The structure also does not have any building permits, and it is located within a wetland, which would be considered an environmentally sensitive habitat area. However, a review of historical aerial imagery has found that the structure has been in place at least since 1955, so that predates zoning regulations as well as the local coastal plan and any building permit requirements, in which case we are reviewing the provisions in place within the zoning regulations for non-conforming structures. In which case, in the coastal zone section, there would be a requirement for a special permit which could be approved by the planning director. The planning director has motion for the project to be taken to the planning commission since there's a strong level of public interest in the project. The provisions also require the application for reconstruction to be submitted within two years, and it was submitted within 30 days. And findings must be made for the Chapter 2 zoning regulations. We've also reviewed the supplemental findings.
Excuse me. Just on this picture, I know we've got one here, too, but it's kind of hard to see for the public and maybe on the audience as well. Which one in particular? Can you point to which circle this is, this one is? Okay, it's that one right there. Okay? Thought it was, but I wanted to be certain.
Regarding the supplemental findings within Chapter 2, the, the project is proposing the least impactful method for repair and reconstruction, as well as limiting ground disturbance activities to outside of the nearby channel of the Elk River. The condition of the wetland plants surrounding the billboard supports is indistinguishable from the surrounding areas and therefore appears that it is able to coexist without impact to the wetlands. There are 33 exemptions under the California Environmental Quality Act, and it appears that the Class 1 exemption for existing facilities and the Class 2 exemption for replacement or reconstruction would apply to this project. As there is little to no expansion, there's no expansion proposed for this project, and the replacement would be in essentially the same location with reuse of as much of the material as safely possible. We've reviewed the exceptions to the exemptions and found that none of the, of them are applicable to the project. The location exception does not apply to Class 1 or Class 2 exemptions, and since the structure has existed there for over 60 years, it's considered part of the environmental Cumulative impacts are not expected considering the signage in the area has reduced by nearly 80% with review of historical imagery. As you can see in the slide here, there's over a dozen billboards which have been removed either due to the expansion of the highway, which used to be a two-lane highway and now is a four-lane highway, or for other reasons. Again, the, there's no significant impact that is expected due to unusual circumstances as the, there's no group, no group, no new ground disturbance expected, and the evidence suggests that signage of this sort can coexist with wetland environments. In addition to the Chapter 2 review, we've reviewed the supplemental findings for granting exception in the coastal zone. These include the four exceptions listed here, which regarding unusual circumstances and conditions that support the granting of an exception. The billboard has existed on the site for over 60 years, and zoning regulations include provisions for reconstruction and repair of existing non-conforming structures. There's no indication of the project being detrimental to public welfare as it is outside of the coastal view area and along an access-controlled segment of the US 101, which will require permission from Caltrans prior to accessing the site. As you can see on the image here on the slide, this is taken from the Humboldt Bay Area Plan Resource Protection Map and shows that the coastal view area is on the east, on the west side of the highway, and therefore the billboard is outside of the coastal view There's a recommendation for a condition of approval requiring that all building permits be attained for reconstruction or repair, which will increase stability and safety of the structure. There are engineered plans already in with the building department and have been included with the staff report. We've also included a condition of approval to restrict the sign to conform with the established standards as closely as feasible. These requirements primarily consist of limiting the lighting and motion of signage in order to not distract motorists. There is no lighting proposed with the sign. Lastly, there's no significant adverse environmental effects on the sensitive habitat expected as the billboard is currently facedown in the wetland, and the project proposes simply to erect the billboard in its place and retain as many of the supports and structures as It's also continuing to use peer-imposed foundations, minimizing the level of footprint of the structure. And the structure has been present for over 60 years, and indicates that the ESHA can coexist with the structure. The structure is subject to the Outdoor Advertising Act, which is a California law, and does currently have a permit from Caltrans for the Outdoor Advertising Act, which is set to expire in 2031. We do have a condition of approval that has been included in the third supplemental for making sure that there is a renewed Outdoor Advertising Act permit and all permissions for accessing the site prior to any ground disturbance activities or accessing the We also have recommended a condition for complying with flood zone requirements in order to ensure safety of the structure, as well as demonstrate conformance with applicable provisions of the California Building Code. There's also an additional condition of approval for providing legal access to the site. The staff is recommending conditional approval of the project. There are several recommended conditions of approval, which have been included to ensure the relevant requirements of other permitting agencies are fulfilled before reconstruction, which do include the evidence of a valid outdoor advertising permit, as well as authorization from the coastal commission. The permitting authority for the structure is within the coastal commission jurisdiction, so the special permit is simply for the, the local zoning of the non-conforming structure. They would still either need to attain a coastal development permit or an exemption from a coastal development permit from the coastal commission. There's also a condition of approval for complying with flood zone requirements, as well as for demonstrating conformance with applicable provisions of the California Building The planning commission may elect one of the alternatives that have been provided here as well. Under alternative one, we've provided two options. One is for a conditional approval with a specified term with no opportunity for renewal. This would allow for amortization in, in case, which would allow the applicant to be able to get the, the costs recovered from reconstructing and permitting the structure if the billboard was to be taken down. An option two, or option B, would be for a conditional approval with a specified term with no opportunity for renewal.
Excuse me. When you're talking about the specified term, is that to 2031, then?
We've left the specified term up to your discretion, however, there was in 2011 a discretionary permit for authorizing construction of a new billboard along Highway 101 in the Alton area, and the term specified in that was for 15 years with the option of a five-year extension. This has been found, this was actually proposed by the applicant as a sufficient amortization period. Alternative number two would be continuing the public hearing and requesting the applicant to provide additional information, or option B under alternative number two would be denial of the permit if the commission is unable to make the required findings. If the commission decides to deny the project, staff recommends that the item be continued to the next commission meeting in order to allow staff the time to develop the findings
Good evening, Commissioner Steve Lozaro. I had a couple additional slides just to show you. We had a number of comments on right-of-way concerns, and we want to make sure that we can provide you information concerning that. Baykeeper raised questions about the sign's location and ownership of the sign, and we're confident after our review that, that it is located on private property and it's located outside of the right-of-way. So this map here, Jofia talked about it earlier, I want to be clear, the reason for our, our determination of the zoning and land use is based on the adjacency of the AE zone to the north and south, and the private lands aren't really rendered in the, in the map exhibit, but had there been private lands recognized by the map, it would make sense that they would be coterminous with these other, the, right here, we did an overlay of a right-of-way map in Google Earth, just to kind of give you an idea. These are maps that are prepared by Caltrans and are records from Caltrans. They don't perfectly overlay with satellite imagery. Part of that's the nature of dynamic features like the slough and the Elk River, but to the extent that we could overlay it effectively, we've dropped a pin here where the sign's located, and you'll see that this area of land between the slough and the highway is not shown on the right-of-way map as lands acquired by Caltrans for right-of-way purposes. These two pieces with the hatchers, these are shown in the legend as being granted to the state of California. You can see the hatchers right here. And part of the reason why I think there's been some confusion about the, the ownership of the sign is these, these represent, if I turn this off for a minute. So you can see these kind of light blue fragments right here. These were lands that were conveyed to the state and then relinquished by the state. So they were held, they're not the lands that are the primary, there's three successor parcel numbers in the case of this project. This portion here, the 08 parcel number, which you can see here, owned by All Points Outdoors, that's successor data. That, that land is, is where this project is located, but all three parcel numbers are private ownership, and I think the confusion surrounded the acquisition of these fragments that were eventually relinquished. So just to, you may hear comments tonight, and we wanted to make sure we got ahead of that by providing assurances to you. And that's, that's the only thing I was going to include.
So through the chair, thank you, Steve Werner. I just wanted to cover a couple of items that we touched on. One of the slides talked about the least impactful, and it was talking about some of the reasons why we're moving forward with this project, the recommendation for approval, conditional approval. A non-conforming structure by its own nature is not going to meet all of the requirements of land use or zoning development standards, and there is a provision within the code within Chapter 2 which talks about exceptions to standards, and that is what we're essentially building the argument for support for this project upon. And so when Jofia was talking about the ways that we're meeting those criteria, the least impactful approach was based on the operational plan by All Points Outdoor, where they're going to do this work with a hand crew, they're going to use existing portions of the sign and billboard as, as best able to be done. It looks like there might be three of those posts that have to be replaced in location or next to those, and when the sign is brought back up from its horizontal to a vertical standing, they're going to use techniques like sistering of boards against the existing boards, so they're not actually increasing the size of this structure at all, and essentially what they're going to do is try to repair it in the least costly way that still meets the requirements for engineering stability. So just wanted to cover that. So just wanted to cover that point. And we touched on, and I think Commissioner Newman also did, about the alternative 1B, which is to set a term for possible revisiting of this sign permit over time. And when Zofia talked about the permit in Alton, that was a brand-new sign. Amortization period was suggested by Stought Outdoor Advertising at the time as a reasonable period of amortization for the cost. This is an existing sign. The work that's going to be done here much less than establishing a brand-new large sign. So you may consider a shorter period. 2031 would be coincident with the current permit term, and that would seem to be within a reasonable period of time. That would be 10 years from here, maybe a little, a few more months. So that could be considered, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have questions of staff?
Sure, I have a couple. First of all, just want to thank the staff. Is it Zofia O'Driscoll? Good job. This is kind of a tough draw for your first presentation. But I don't want to get too into my questions and concerns before we've heard public comment. I know we have some very knowledgeable and thoughtful public comments to hear, but just a couple of questions. Are we in fact, in this, because I've just seen a little bit of ambiguity, are we concerned only with one billboard, the one that fell down? This has no bearing on the existing, still-standing, sort of nearby billboard? Is that correct?
Through the chair. So the billboard that's the subject of this permit is the one that fell over because of the strong wind event. The other billboard was not impacted, as we understand. It is also, as you've seen from those photos from back in the '50s and forward, is one that was permitted well before the county established its own zoning rules or adopted its general plan.
Right.
So we're not addressing that in particular, just the one that has been impacted by the wind event.
So just to be clear, does our decision on the one that would require reconstruction have any bearing on the legal status of the other existing and still-standing billboard?
No, it would still be legal nonconforming under the county regulations. The trigger that requires this matter to come before you is our provisions of our nonconforming regulations that address a casualty to that structure, which would require it to be reconstructed or essentially re-erected.
Right, right.
If it were standing, such as the other one, or this perhaps over time, and a support needed to be reinforced, that would be done on a one-for-one basis. So there's a separate section of the zoning code that would allow that without revisiting it through a special permit.
Okay. I guess the other particular detail in the presentation that I just wanted to maybe hear a little more detail about, because it is one of the several grounds for concerns that I'm aware of, is in the recommending conditions of approval, in addition to requiring an ODA permit, obviously Coastal Commission, you say complying with the flood zone requirements. And I didn't really hear any speaking to that. I mean, notwithstanding all of the other things that may have changed since this was initially constructed and possibly permitted, we have some better awareness, let's just say, of the flood risk in this location, and I am curious how the conditions that you're recommending speak to that.
So through the chair, it is correct that this particular billboard was placed at that location before the county had adopted its flood damage prevention ordinance, and the FEMA mapping for the base flood shows that this sign is now within that location. So it triggers that the building permit be compliant with the county's flood damage prevention rules. We spoke today with the chief building official, and he has assured us that the plan that's been submitted for the engineered reconstruction of the footings would be satisfactory for that standard. There is a requirement that it meet that, and we will not essentially release the permit until all the checks and sign-offs have been made.
Okay. I think that's all for now.
Melanie, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Thank you. First off, I'd just like to know whether there was ever any policy developed at the county planning level in regards to nonconforming uses generally and specifically in regards to signs. So as long ago as 1966, the American Planning Association did a big study that you're probably familiar with on this, and basically decided that, you know, the investment, once it's been destroyed or damaged, is gone. And there is no obligation to provide an investment. Of course, then we have precedent, like the city of Los Angeles versus Gage, where, you know, that's, there are some dissenting views on that. But it, many places do have a policy. So no matter what our decision is here as a commission, and the APA did decide that it was basically lack of interest and input on the side of local officials that has resulted in things kind of stagnating maybe, I would love to see a policy. Because otherwise, it's unfair to some to have it always be discretionary. All right? So it depends on who's on the commission and, you know, what day it is and who's on staff. It's far better to have a policy on, well, just about anything, but especially on this issue. Because, and I would specifically like to see a policy where they are retired. I don't think we should be handing out new nonconforming permits. That's my opinion. That said, there have been precedents, as I have mentioned, and of course, the SEQU is kind of silent on this issue. Yeah, notwithstanding your wonderful presentation, Zofia. So I would like to see a policy at the county level for this, whether our decision is to amortize or not, so that it, in the future, it doesn't always end up as a discretionary My second question, which is more of a question than a statement and a request, is whether there has been any research done as to the future plans for bicycle paths? Because I know that there is a big movement to extend our bicycle path all the way potentially down to the Bay Area, but in the short term, as far down as Garberville. And, you know, the placement is where you would probably put something like that. And so I would like to know what the situation is with any plans or thought that might have been put into other plans that may conflict with this use, this nonconforming use.
I noticed one of our professional colleagues, Jesse Robertson from Caltrans, is here, and I think could better speak to that, but I don't think the staff is prepared to give you any insight into that. But we might be able to hear from them.
Thank you. And on the policy issue, perhaps the director might weigh in on that.
Yeah, I think the general plan does have some guidance for us, and I think that is reflected in the staff report. And the general plan would, as I recall, discourage billboards at this location. The struggle is, is the general plan has not been certified by the Coastal Commission or adopted by the county for the coastal zone. So while there is that guidance in general, it is really not adopted or certified policy at this point.
Okay, thank you. And are there plans to maybe do that, given the level of interest in our area, and in particular against perhaps billboards, maybe that there would be a policy to retire, to make sure they are retired?
You know, if the, it'd be the commission's desire, that hasn't been agendized tonight to have a discussion about that. But if it is something the commission would like to discuss and make a recommendation to the board to develop such a policy, be happy to put that on the agenda. But that really needs to be an agendized discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Just real quick, I know others have comments, but it's follow-up on--
Not comments.
Oh, questions, questions, indeed. It's a follow-up on Melanie's question, which I think is excellent, about the need to develop a policy so that these sorts of nonconforming cases are not just left to the whim of, as you say, who's on staff, who's on the commission. But since she raised that issue, I just want to ask the other question that it sort of begs. As Director Ford just said, to the extent that we have any guiding policy on whether we should lean towards squinting and trying to make the findings to support this in this location, that guidance seems to weigh against approving it. And certainly, the weight of public comment on it is against it. And even those who grant, and not everybody does grant, that it is within the law to use our discretion to allow it, say, why would we? You know, we should take this as a windfall, so to speak, to get rid of something that would otherwise not be allowed in that location. So I guess I really do want to ask, not Zofia, but, you know, Mr. Werner, Director Ford, what is the public policy argument or public benefit that weighs in favor of us kind of squinting and filling in the gap to try to make the findings that this would be allowed? I'm honestly perplexed, and I tend to agree with your recommendations. I'm having a hard time understanding the basis of this recommendation.
So I think what we tried to do was to take a kind of a very technical look at what does the zoning ordinance say, what does the Humboldt Bay Area Plan say, what is our real technical guidance say? And from a bottom-line perspective, there are two things there. One is procedure, and then one are the findings that must be made. And I think you're right, to take things at a very technical level, the policy guidance would seem to militate against it, because you can't make all the findings for a nonconforming structure, it's because it's nonconforming. And so that's why Steve, I think, was talking about the exceptions. And so the reality is, is that we were coming from the perspective that if we're looking at this as a structure that has been there, that while there is a lot of thought about the blight, the visual blight of billboards, and that's been a planning discussion for probably longer than I've been alive, there is also the reality that there is an income source, this is a business, this is something that people do. So we tried to walk the line of understanding that there is this tension, and that we wanted to address something that took into account the environmental factors, the visual factors, the public factors, the economic factors. And that's why we gave a primary recommendation, but also gave you alternatives to consider, because it may be that the, in the long term, the Planning Commission doesn't want to see this at this location. But it may be that the Planning Commission's not ready to tell the applicant, you got to do away with it right now. And so that's why we gave you a range of options, because without having struggled with a policy that says absolutely yes or absolutely no, it's really hard to hold an applicant to a very strict, strict standard when they have been receiving income from this.
Okay, thanks. That's a good answer. Appreciate that.
Mike, you've been--
So my question is, I saw on one of the alternatives about saying no, basically, we're really bringing the time limit down. What my question is, what is the compensation of the ODA permit? Outdoor Development Act, or whatever it is?
So at this point--
That's kind of the compensation part for taking of private property, right?
Yeah, at this point, it's requiring a new permit, and so it, it's not like something that we're going and taking away something somebody has. As a condition of the permit is putting a time limit on it.
Well, the time limit right now shows 2031.
Well, that's with ODA.
Right, ODA.
Yeah, we could tie that to our, we could tie our permit to that permit timeframe.
But if it was sooner, what would that compensation be? If our permit was tied in shorter or not even?
I'm not sure that we have any liability there, because this is a new permit. We wouldn't have to compensate. I'll just say, if we make it too short, where there is no ability to recoup the investment, that may be an issue.
Yeah, I was thinking, I read someplace in all of this, that, and part of the presentation it was--
Thank you for bringing that up. We originally had understood that there was an inability due to the Outdoor Advertising Act to put a time limit on the permit. So the alternatives that we gave tonight differed, I believe, from what was in the staff report, because we came to a clearer understanding of what the law was and what our actual alternatives could be. And so some of the information in the staff report didn't quite, don't quite capture what our current understanding of the law is. And the current understanding of the law is, we can put a time limit on it, and we would not have to compensate the applicant to have the sign removed.
And we don't have to.
Yeah, what I was speaking of before actually addressed that. So legally, once a nonconforming structure fails due to one of three causes, one of which is destruction, the investment is considered reached. Now, typically, amortizations were given out, if you look nationally. The APA, like I said, has several papers on this, so that there was a clear amortization, in which case, if something happened during, say, a 15-year time period, commissions would be more likely to say, okay, well, I'll let you put it back up, because we agreed to give you a 15-year amortization. Now, if there wasn't an amortization, it's just considered, the investment is considered attained, reached. And in this particular case, certainly, we could probably all agree that the investment has been attained, given that it's been there since, what is it, 1960 or 1950-something, '55? So I--
She's two years younger than me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anyone would argue that this, the investment has not been attained. And legally, the investment has been attained as soon as a nonconforming structure has been destroyed. So that's the standing for that.
So we're kind of getting into discussion here. We need to, any other questions for staff? If not, we're going to open this up to the, get some public comment, and then we'll bring it back and have the discussion about it. Any more questions?
Alan, were we going to have the applicant talk at some point?
Well, I'm hoping that they will be in public comment, so--
But I mean, more than three minutes?
Is the applicant here, and would they like to speak?
Is the applicant here, and would they like to speak?
Yeah.
All right. Why don't you come up first, then we'll open public comment after that?
How's it going? Jeff Wills on All Points Outdoor. I have a prepared statement, just a couple of things that queued in my mind since I've been here, and so about like the investment. So I just bought this land in 2017 for almost $2 million, this and other land. So in my particular case, the investment has not been reached yet by any means at all. You know, to Noah, you're kind of wondering, why would there any be any recommendation or any case to allow this to be rebuilt? Oh, sorry, you guys can hear me? Is that better? Oh, there we go. Um, you know, I, my business, I am the reason to allow it to be rebuilt. This is how I earn my living, this is what we do. It's not just about feelings of people's perceptions and opinions of if this is pretty or not. This is how people earn their living in this community. The, one more thing I just freestill that I noticed, is like the ODA permit, the 2031, that's just an arbitrary date. Like my permits on my billboards I own, I just renew them year to year. So it's not like that billboard is not going to be permanent after 2031. Caltrans permits billboards indefinitely forever. All you have to do is pay your $100. In this case, Outfront Media just chooses to pay like 15 years at a time, because they have the cash flow to do that. In my particular case, I just pay year to year. So that would be, you know, I wouldn't look to that as being a timeframe that like this billboard is going to be going, or anything like that. It'll be renewed, probably in 2025 for another 15-year term, or something like that. So I'll get to what I have to say here now, and I'd like to thank staff, I think they did an excellent job. They put together a very thorough staff report. And given the apparent political issues surrounding this issue, Mr. Ford has assigned this project to his senior planners to ensure that the report was completed by our most competent planner. The staff report goes into great detail, and its recommendation for approval, allowing me to repair my billboard, I support. Given that staff has completely covered all planning and environmental concerns with this, the repair of my billboard, I urge you to acknowledge their professional recommendation and approve the project. But I have been enough to enough of these meetings to understand that even though this is a legal permitted sign on my private property, the Humboldt County General Code allows for it to be repaired and remain on my property, the staff has determined that it's legally allowed to continue to exist, and we, yet we still have to devolve into a little bit of a political fight over it should be here, over people's opinions and perceptions of billboards. Like I said, I recently purchased this property along with 23 other signs in September 2017 from Jim Hoff, whom unfortunately had to sell his life's work and passion prior to succumbing to cancer in 2018. Although Jim was a good friend of mine and a mentor to me, he was not a fool when it came to business, and as such, I had to bid against multiple large-scale billboard companies, companies like Viacom, Clear Channel, and Lamar Outdoor. I worked diligently for three months on this project, trying to figure out how I was going to be able to raise millions of dollars and compete with these mega corporations. Banks will not lend on billboards, so I was forced to raise all my money through private investors. Luckily enough, our small business community in Humboldt is very tight-knit, and there's an incredible amount of business-to-business relationships. I was able to secure capital from three local business owners, and they took the risk on it to help out a small local company and entrepreneur like myself. In addition to finding help with our local business community, Jim Hoff himself accepted my bid over a much larger company's bid, giving up nearly a half million dollars to help me succeed. He did so because he knew he was helping a young local business owner have a shot at creating something and helping give someone in his community the tools to succeed. The points I'm illustrating here is that this is not just a sign on the ground, this sign is my business. You're not deciding on whether to allow a sign to be repaired, you're deciding on whether to allow my business to continue to operate. My company employs eight people who depend on the signs to earn their livings. I have 42 local businesses that advertise on my billboards. They have chosen to advertise on billboards because they help their businesses succeed. You have the duty to our county to do everything possible to allow our community members an opportunity to earn a living. This is a specially easy decision, given that you're simply allowing an existing structure to be repaired. You no doubt will hear from a small collection of local community members opposing my business. You may have received or heard from, you know, 50 to 100 people, I honestly believe that's an extremely overstated amount, but even if it is 100 people, that represents ten thousandths of a percent of our community here. You were appointed by elected officials, whom were elected to represent our entire county, not the vocal minority. Please do not make a political decision to put a hard-working local business out of business. Following your staff's recommendation allows the status quo to continue, gives my business and my investments the opportunity needed to succeed. Any decision other than the staff's recommendation would be a detrimental blow to my business, my employees, and my family. You'd be siding with and valuing the feelings and opinions of a small group of people over the general plan, your staff recommendation, the success of my business, my ability to employ my staff, and honestly, my ability to put food on the table and live in Humboldt County. And do you guys have any questions for me on anything in regards to the construction methods, or anything else that wasn't answered by staff?
I have one question.
Yeah.
When you're erecting that structure back up, so you're going to be taking off the old plywood in order to get the main beams on up, and then putting new plywood on as part of the reconstruction project, is that it?
Essentially, we basically go out there and pretty much cut up everything that is not usable, and sizes that we can physically carry, remove that from there, and then start rebuilding. So in this case, we'll, the face has fallen over, given where it is in the wetlands, and we can't use any equipment, or any, any cranes or anything like that. We'll probably cut most of the face up into small pieces, start from the catwalk, which is about 10 feet up, and start building the main posts and the support posts up, and then re-sheet it with plywood.
Great.
Is there footings, concrete footings?
Yeah, they have concrete footings, so they're all hand-dug by shovel, with shovels.
And what kind of materials do you use, do you have any treated materials?
Just pressure-treated wood.
Does that have any environmental impacts?
It does not.
It, actually, on one of the conditions here, pressure-treated wood is not allowed.
Is that, even though the engineer says that?
I apologize, I neglected to go over the, Jeff, we did prepare a supplemental for the commission.
Okay.
We did receive comments from baykeepers and other members of the public with concerns about the use of pressure-treated because of the wetland environment.
Right.
We spoke with our chief building official, who assured us that there are alternative things that can be used with, under the building code, so it just needs to be a durable wood project.
That's fine.
Could be cedar, could be redwood, but something that wouldn't have any kind of leaching effect with the wetland environment, so-
Does no one have any concerns?
Or even metal?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every single Caltrans sign along there is all pressure-treated, and gets put in all the time now. So maybe we should care about that, too.
Yeah, I thought it was a good accommodation to-
That's fine, we can use redwood, that's good solid wood. Any other questions?
I appreciate your presentation, and that matters to me. I mean, I, I'm not sure it should affect me, but it does affect me that it is you, a local business owner, rather than a statewide or nationwide, you know, billboard business. But I have to ask, to your point about the investment you've made, which has not been returned, I mean, you know, as a businessman, you would, you would need to do due diligence about this issue. In purchasing the billboard in a location where a new one could not be erected under any standard today, I wonder if you kind of looked at or were advised on the legality of rebuilding it if it were to blow over in a storm or otherwise be compromised?
Yeah, I did. And, I mean, Melanie's suggestion of actually having very clear policy would be very helpful, because I looked at it, and my attorney looked at it, we have, it got, it was, this board was actually permanent in 1945, so it has a longstanding history of being there. I knew that I would own the land 100%, I knew that I had a long land lease with Outfront Media, the billboard, actual billboard owner. And, you know, and looking at our general plan code, it actually just suggested it would be a discretionary permit from the director. So I did do my research as best we could, but there is no clear answer on that.
Yeah.
So, you know, as is business, there is no 100% secure investment, but I felt, given the length of the term that they're there, being that I'd be the property owner, being that I'd be a local, you know, good-standing business, I would hope that people would allow that to continue.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? No, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
We'll now open this up for public comment. Suzanne.
My name is Tara Friedman, and I'm here as a member of the all-volunteer citizen group, Keep Eureka Beautiful, working to make Eureka a city of tree-lined streets. Along with adding beauty, trees improve the environment, add property value, slow traffic, reduce energy usage, reduce crime, and create a more livable city. We realize that billboards provide income for businesses and individuals, but removing them benefits the whole community. We care about All Points, their owner and staff, and all local businesses, and would support alternative methods for them to maintain their ongoing success. Last November, along with a billboard that fell into Humboldt Bay, the Elk River Wetlands billboard crumbled in a storm under strong winds. It was located south of Eureka between Humboldt Hill and Elk River Road on the east side of the freeway. It is close to coastal waters near the confluence of the Elk River and Swain Slough. It is our belief that it never should have been built in coastal wetlands and should not be rebuilt. Thank you very much.
Yeah, my name's Dave Mizerv, and I'm speaking for myself, and also for a group called Humboldt Bay Billboard Bye-Bye, that was formed about four years ago, when the discussion was going on about the billboards along the bay between Arcata and Eureka. It was very interesting to me to see the picture from 1955 or 60, the aerial shot, and to see all those billboards out there along the Tulane Road. So from my point of view, we've come a long way. I think that the main point I'd like to make is that there's nothing wrong with billboards in, on commercial or industrial property, which is what the general plan calls for, is to allow billboards on those properties, and not to allow them on ag land or in areas with viewscape. Now, in this particular case, the view of the bay is not impacted, but to anyone who's familiar with this, I'm sure you all are, it's a beautiful view, driving north, looking out across the Elk River Valley there. And although I, you know, fully understand Jeff's point of view as the owner of the signs, I also think that we need to move towards a position where the beauty of the land, the viewscape, is protected from commercial billboards. And I think that the policy has done that. The billboards that are there are non-conforming because of their location, too close to the river, in a viewscape, not on industrial or commercial land. So I think it's, it's kind of strange, and I know that you're all feeling this conflict, that you're being asked to approve the rebuilding of what we all agree is a non-conforming structure under current rules. And that just seems a little bit silly, especially as the plan does get implemented, as the Coastal Commission approves it, and as we move forward, and are not allowing new billboards out there, and hopefully are taking down billboards that are in violation of the rules. So I'm not sure what you can do. I realize your position, believe me. I dealt on the Arcata City Council with Viacom and all of that way back in 2006, and I think it is important for local communities to assert their values. And so I would ask you, perhaps the best thing you could do at this point would be to delay the decision, and then to move forward with a policy, and I would urge you to make that policy not to renew leases, not to allow rebuilding of non-conforming billboards. We wouldn't allow anything that was dangerous out there to be rebuilt, just because it had been there for 60 years. And so I don't think we should allow something that's ugly to be rebuilt out there either. So I would hope that you could delay your approval of this permit, and then come up with a policy that would reflect the ongoing decisions reflected in the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Colt with Humboldt Baykeeper. So I hope that you all had a chance to read her comments. Several of the points that we made have been addressed just a few hours ago, so the issue of it being Caltrans property or within the Caltrans right-of-way is apparently not an issue anymore, but, and I just want to say, Baykeeper also doesn't object to all billboards. It's billboards in wetlands and coastal view areas that are, are issue. So the outstanding questions that still need to be addressed, I'm not sure where there's an exception for the required findings for all permits, but, and, you know, the findings say that the proposed development is consistent with the purposes of the existing zone in which the site is located. And I, you know, my read is all special permits have to be consistent with Chapter 2, and so I'm not really sure where that comes from. The other, one of the other overarching concerns that we have is that the ODA doesn't allow billboards within 660 feet of the right-of-way, unless there are certain types of billboards, which is not a commercial off-site billboard. They only allow billboards for historic landmarks or natural wonders, is what it actually says, within that 660 foot of the right-of-way. And the ODA also doesn't allow billboards to be placed or maintained in any stream or drainage channel below the floodwater level of any stream or drainage channel where the advertising display might be deluged by floodwaters and swept under any highway structure crossing the stream or against the supports of the highway structure. And this is clearly in 100-year flood zone in the floodwater, below the floodwater level of the Elk River upstream from the Elk River Highway Bridge. And so I bring these things up because it seems to me that it can't be really determined where the new sign would have to be placed to comply with state laws. And so to say, well, just deal with that later, and there won't be any impacts to wetlands, seems backwards to me. And then lastly, I just want to say, the case law that the city of Arcata established in 2006, that Mr. Mizerv was talking about, clearly states that the state law, the state ODA, does not have precedence over county or city jurisdictions, or ordinances, or policies. And so, you know, that was another issue having to do with a billboard that had fallen down in a storm, and the city of Arcata said, no, you can't rebuild it, because it doesn't conform to our current policies. We don't allow billboards on, anywhere but commercial or industrial property. And so there was a legal wrangling over that. The city of Arcata appealed, and that was the case law that was published, was that the, the local decision takes precedence over state law. So I hope that you can, you know, think about getting more information before you move forward on this, and, yeah, I think a policy would be really wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Hi, excuse me, my name is Hillary Mosher, I'm a resident of McKinleville. I disagree with the finding that there is no adverse effect to public welfare on this. While there probably are some people who enjoy billboards, I think they're probably all billboard owners. Everyone I've ever raised the issue with hates them. In addition to creating blight on our otherwise beautifully bucolic view while driving, the subject matter of these signs is often offensive, such as a casino ad for the Cherry Poppin' Daddies, or an ad that claimed Measure V is bad for seniors, which was an outright lie, for which there was- for which there was no opportunity for rebuttal. I don't want to be forcefully subjected to commercials, commercials while I drive, that can be very distracting and upsetting. I know that I speak for a very large group of Humboldt County residents on this issue. While it is unfortunate that a business owner will suffer when this permit is not granted, just because a thing existed for 60 years is not an excuse to continue with it. If this were true, we might offer conditional permits to allow littering in certain sections of the highway. I can remember, I'm 67, there were no littering laws back then. So we really have to look at what precedent are we setting and what is the content of the decision that you make. And I really want to thank you all for being here and giving up your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Hello there. My name is Stan Wong, and I've met a few of you before. And I understand the commission here as their duties and their responsibilities, but we're talking about something that made sense, like in the '50s and '60s, and are billboards really needed in this modern era? I understand the All Points Guy, he has a business, so I sympathize with that, but can anybody in this room, other than the All Point Guy, really tell us what was on the billboard that fell down? Does anybody actually remember what they see on this billboard that's fallen down? People don't really look at billboards anymore, and it's a bad investment for the businesses because they don't get their money's worth off this billboard, and they probably won't if you put it back up. And Melanie here was talking about the trail. I was at a meeting maybe more than a year ago, and they talked about a trail going down the CR and getting people from the Humboldt Hill area into the city of Eureka. So that trail thing actually is in development, and we've got to consider, you know, what's advantageous to our future, not restoring something that was 50 years old and doesn't really fit in our day and age anymore. So I understand the duties and the businessmen, but let's have some logic and reason here. It doesn't really work. Thank you, and I'll try to be brief. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
My name's Chuck Elsworth. I'm a retired sign painter. And I'll tell you what was on that billboard was an ad for ag credit, and it had a picture of a cow. It was pretty cute. But that's not really the point. Every time a question like this comes before any commission, it is an opportunity to either advance or harm the economic environment. So I would really appreciate it if you'd go with staff's recommendation and approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Usually about this time we take a break. I'm thinking before we bring it back to the commission, we'll take a small break and then deliberate. So 10-minute break, we'll be back at 25 after. All right, let's get this thing going. We're going to bring it back to the commission. Who has questions? Oh, John has a...
Yeah, if I could, I think staff would like to address a couple of things before you begin deliberations, because there's a couple of things there that seem to raise some ambiguity. And one of them that was raised by the public that I just wanted to revisit was that, you know, the request to delay the decision to develop a policy. And there's two things to consider there. One, you know, it'd be really good to have a policy, but as I mentioned before, that's not a direction that can be given right now. It's not, it's not been advertised or agendized. And so the commission needs to be really careful about what you do with that. And I would offer that I've heard at least two of you identify you'd like to see that done. We will bring back a workshop, a discussion on that point, and so that can be addressed separately. That's really not part of the discussion tonight, if that's acceptable and fair. The other thing that was brought up and is the concern with being within 660 feet of the right-of-way and/or being maintained in any channel where deluged by floodwaters. And the comment being that it can't be determined where the sign needs to be placed in order to comply with state laws. So one of the things that we've attempted to do is rewrite Condition 1 to identify that the verification of the permit from Caltrans would be for the reconstructed billboard. So if they can't get, we couldn't get an answer from the Office of Outdoor Display with Caltrans in time to conclusively say whether or not this site needs to comply with the 660 feet or not. So really, there is one of two options for you here. One is to find that if you were inclined to approve this project, to find that that condition requiring that the, that Caltrans issue that permit is sufficient, because if it, if the sign can't comply with those requirements, it can't be permitted. The condition then means it can't be permitted. Or to continue the item until, basically to a date uncertain, to get a conclusive answer from Caltrans. I mean, I would offer those really as the two options that the commission has. It is a fairly significant concern. And then I just want to be really clear about where the code talks about being deluged by floodwaters and not being within the banks of a channel. And this was something that we struggled with, frankly, with the Harbor District as to whether or not this is in Harbor District or county jurisdiction. The one on the billboard that fell on the north side of the city of Eureka, between Eureka and Arcata, that's kind of laying in the bay right now, is within Harbor District jurisdiction, so it's not in the county jurisdiction. And one of the things that, in talking to the Harbor District, we decided it's not actually within the banks of the channel, and so it's outside of the Harbor District jurisdiction. Now, is it in an area that's subject to flooding? Yes, it is. And so one of the things that the county code requires is that if a structure is to be constructed within an area that is prone to flooding, it needs to be engineered to withstand the hydrostatic forces of the floodwaters. And this would be subject to those requirements. And so it would need to be engineered and designed to not succumb to floodwaters. And so that is addressed by existing county regulations that are already in place if this were to be approved at this location. And then just call your attention to the supplemental, I believe this is the supplemental number three that we gave you tonight, is that that does include the, not only the revised conditions, but also an additional finding that's addressed there to address some of these things that we've talked about.
Through the chair. So what you're saying there, Director Ford, is under C there, all requirements for the applicable structural and mechanical codes then would include the flooding aspect. Is that what you're saying there?
Absolutely.
Okay. Noah?
Um, I, this is just responding to Director Ford's comments just now. I really appreciate you getting right to those couple of points that were raised by public comments and framing them as a couple of alternative ways to proceed. And I just wanted to follow up on that and on Ms. Odri's presentation earlier where she concluded with various alternatives for a decision, Alternative 2A, I believe it was, was that we continue the hearing to seek additional information. Director Ford has just pointed to one particular crucial piece of information that might be required under such a decision, but I just wanted to ask the staff if there are other particular points that you think might similarly be appropriate to say we cannot render a decision on this until we get answers to this question or that question.
May I?
I'm done.
Staff going to reply to anything?
If I could just add to what Commissioner Lovey said, I haven't received an answer regarding the bicycle paths. So that would be something that we would like to hear.
So I think based upon what we understand, the bicycle path would be on the west side of the freeway, and it's unlikely, and this is a plus and a minus for this particular application, it's unlikely to be placed on this side where there are wetlands.
Well, again, just to reemphasize my question, I mean, clearly I did have, and I thank Jen Colt for having raised the issue of the ODA compliance, the 660 setback, the requirement to withstand flood velocity. Are there other specific pieces of information that we might seek? I mean, just one question, I guess, that occurs to me is, have, I understand that the way this works is that we render a decision and then the Coastal Commission reviews it. Commission reviews it. But I wonder if the county staff has communicated with the Coastal Commission. I mean, we could be tying ourselves in knots to try to find a way to get to yes on this when it's just all but a certainty that the Coastal Commission will say, "No way." And I just wonder what your sense of that... What your sense of that issue is, or if it's not even appropriate for you to have inquired.
So, through the chair, two things. One, the special permit before you tonight would not be reviewable by the Coastal Commission. Their requirements under 30610 of the Coastal Act, and there's a subsection there that allows for the reconstruction of a structure damaged by a casualty such as a disaster, they call it. And this would fall under that category of exemption under the Coastal Act. Now, there are some issues around how a person might pursue the reconstruction that could fall under development outside of the area of reconstruction. And so that could be something that would need to have specific treatment in their review of the application. However, the standard for the reconstruction under the Coastal Act is an exemption unless there's some other qualifying development action.
And if I could add to what Mr. Warner said, yes, we did have this discussion with the Coastal Commission staff. They did not give us a conclusive answer. They have not reached a conclusion on how they're gonna view this.
Any other comments?
I have one. If... I think that we've definitely came to the conclusion that we need to have something down the road to come up with some kind of ordinance or a policy on this kind of thing. But I think to do anything but just take this project on its merits tonight is not doing what we're asked. I think we're going down a slippery slope when we, you know, try to put our personal views or what have you into the decision-making. I think that we've had a project come before us. I don't... It's been there since 1940-something. I mean, the numbers have bounced around, but I mean, it's pretty obvious that it's been there for a long time. I think that we'll have the discussion whether it should be there or not at some point, but I think the decision tonight needs to be made whether we're gonna allow him to rebuild it. I mean, he is a landowner, he has rights. I think he should be able to, you know, if he meets the things that the county is saying, should be able to repair his facility there. So, it's my view. Anybody have any more comments?
Yes, I'm... Oh, go ahead, Mike.
I'm after you.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess I have a dissenting opinion on that. So, given that there are only eight employees in total, and we don't know how many are tasked to this particular sign, I don't see this being for the greater good of Humboldt County. Most people are against billboards, and if anything, feel angered by the companies that might be advertising on them if they look at them at all. So, on that particular argument, I don't really see that the employment outweigh... The employment benefits for Humboldt County definitely do not outweigh the differing opinions of the public against billboards in that area. So, that's on that. Now, legally, the American Planning Association has, you know, quite strongly many times said that, you know, once a non-conforming structure has been destroyed, then the investment is over. And the general plan suggests that we do not try to make findings, which are nearly impossible to do, to... For a non-conforming structure. The argument that, you know, it's just been there a long time, I mean, you know, we used to have signs for cigarettes and, you know, all manner of things for a long time, and yet we all agree that we don't want them anymore. You know, native Canadians weren't even allowed to vote until 1960. So, I mean, the fact that something has been status quo or been there for a long time is not the, you know, the argument to be made in this particular one billboard case. So, on the basis of those three, I believe, strong arguments, I think that we should go with Alternative 2 and deny the Alternative 2B, I believe it is, and deny the... Trying to find the findings for a non-conforming structure.
I have a question. This would probably be for legal staff, since we have legal staff tonight. The fact that that structure's been there since 1945 or whenever, and that person, the owner of that property, now it's changed hands, has been paying taxes and such on that for all those years, does that give them any standing as to the validity of having that billboard there?
We do have the pathway in our code for reconstruction of non-conforming structures. So that is the pathway that our code would allow for this to be reconstructed. But the case law would consider this to be a reconstruction of a structure. And so they aren't in the same position that they would be if we granted a new permit and, you know, had to deal with the term in terms of amortizing the value. This is like starting over for them.
So, some of my comments are, as a business owner, when you invest in things, you are looking out in the distance at, you know, what you're investing this money for to then have return on. And that's what All Points has done, the new owner here. This is, you know, a non-conformance billboard, but it has... Just needs to be reconstructed or rebuilt in the existing place that it is currently. Advertising is subjective to everybody. I don't mind billboards, as long as they're, you know, in taste. This one has been in taste. I have never seen a billboard that's not been tastefully done. And if it has, then there's usually a public outcry and/or people boycotting the advertiser that has that advertisement up. That happens with print media as well as then any other type of media. So, I'd like to see this rebuilt with the condition... With the revision to Condition of Approval 1, with those requirements that the Caltrans has to issue their okay with their permit, and that then the Part C of 15 needs to go into force there. But we should permit this. We could put a time limit on it to conform with the ODA permit, which was saying it was until 2031. That's a good 11 years from now. And I think that would be then putting the owner on notice that this one is probably not going to be permitted after that point. But that gives him enough time to recoup some of that investment, even though he has 42 signs throughout Humboldt County and maybe other parts of surrounding counties, I'm not sure. But he has some means then to recoup by not cutting this out, so to speak, right away. He has made an investment in order to recoup that investment. He was counting on the income of what this billboard would pay every month or every year, whatever the lease may be on that. And he bought that with that in mind. So, I'd like to see us approve this project for reconstruction with the revision to Condition of Approval Number 1.
Well, we knew that this one would not be the easiest call, and as always, I do respect the opinions of my fellow commissioners. As I think my comments have suggested, I expect I will have a hard time ultimately making the required findings that would justify this legally. Again, not out of lack of sympathy for the owner or his business, but simply in really trying to apply what the law requires. But that said, I actually think that the staff may have pointed us towards a potentially useful middle ground, because here's the thing. The question that is outstanding about what ODA requires to give their permit is pretty impactful on the question of whether this will be just a simple rebuilding of the same sign in the same place using all or most of the same footings, or whether it actually needs to be something more. I mean, it's not just about whether they have to comply with a 660-foot setback, but it's also, let's just say they don't find that that's required, but they do find that it has to be rebuilt in a way that requires substantially stronger engineering to withstand flood-velocity waters. You know, then we're not just talking about using these same old concrete footings, we're talking about something that actually could really be more disruptive to the wetland ecosystem. And so, I might propose, and if you would like, I can even put it as a motion, but I'm not quite sure that we're there, that we adopt Alternative 2A, that would continue the public hearing to a date uncertain, requiring answers to at least those two specific questions regarding what ODA will require and possibly any other additional information that is required.
That sounds good. That also gives the applicant time to decide whether they would wish to proceed.
Well, maybe I should just make it that. I would move then that we adopt Alternative 2A, that we continue the public hearing to a date uncertain, and that we request the applicant and/or the county staff provide us with the additional information of whether it... What it would take to comply with the requirements of an ODA permit.
I'll let you come back up to the speaker, since you are the applicant.
So, it sounds like there's confusion that I need to get a permit from Caltrans to rebuild this? Is that what you guys are questioning?
Essentially, yeah.
We don't. We already have... The permit that we have, it's good till 2031. There is no require... I don't... Like, there's no building permit, there's no planning permit, there's nothing from that from Caltrans. So, all Caltrans is care... All they care about is that we get our local jurisdiction, Coastal Commission, things like that. Once I get my permit from you guys, and I get the permit from the Coastal Commission, we simply rebuild. I have to get encroachment permits from Caltrans, so that's to stop in the sound of the highway and stuff like that.
Right.
But the 660-foot thing does... That does not apply to this permit. So if this billboard fell down, I let the permit lapse, and I applied for a new permit, not this permit number that this billboard is tied to, then the 660-foot would come back into play. So there is no permit that I need to get from Caltrans.
That would be for a conforming structure?
No. I've already had several conversations with Caltrans about this, because in the ODA Act, we have 60 days to rebuild a billboard, otherwise you lose your permit. But what that basically means is you can't just leave it sitting there without an attempt to get permits. So, since we started the permit process, I've checked in with him, there's nothing else... You look like you don't believe me. There's nothing else we have to do with Caltrans other than get local jurisdictions' permission to rebuild. Do you know something I don't know about that? Or are you questioning that?
Well, I mean, if I may say, I appreciate that you do know something about this, and you may well be right, but I think we have to rely on a clear recommendation from staff on that point, and that's what we have not had, is whether there is anything... It may not be a matter of you getting a permit from Caltrans, per se, but whether there are other constraints on the county that must comply with ODA in a sort of roundabout way.
Yeah, but that was just directed from a public comment, that 660-foot. Someone else came up and said that, you know, I have to talk to North Dakota, and North Dakota says to say it's okay. You'd say, "Well, let's see what they have to say about that."
With respect, Humboldt Baykeeper has a pretty good track record at knowing what it's talking about when it cites the law.
No, but in the Harbor District Committee, she said that all our permits on the Bay billboards had expired four years ago, when I, in fact, then proved that they had not expired. So she came in a public setting and said, "I don't know why we're even talking about this. Caltrans canceled those permits four years ago."
Not true. That's a public... I mean, we should go review that.
All right. We asked you to come back up and talk to us. Don't argue with the audience. All right. Thank you for your...
Yeah, I agree.
Director Ford, do you have something more from Caltrans on that?
I think that we have no definitive information that we can give you right now. Well, confident...
Sorry. Are you confident with the... What you have in the staff report from Caltrans to move forward with this project? Or do you feel that you need clarity on that?
So, as I understand it, the, you know, at... I'm gonna encourage the continuance at this point.
I'm happy to so move. I'm certainly happy to move for a continuance to allow staff to do further research. All I would say, in fairness to the applicant, is that if it is phrased in such a way that we're requesting the applicant provide additional information, which is what it says up there, we should be very clear about what we're asking of him. And if it is more appropriate to continue to give the staff more time to confer with sister agencies and so forth, then that's not putting a burden on the applicant, per se.
I think the director has something to say.
Yeah, I would encourage you to allow the staff to do the research and bring the information back definitively to the commission.
Great, then I'm happy to make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? No. Motion carries. So, moving on to Samoa Pacific Group Final Map Subdivision Coastal Development Permit. Plan Development Permit. Give staff a second to get set up.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Trevor Estalo, the assigned planner for this project. The project before each night is one component of the Samoa Town Master Plan. This project includes a tentative map for the phased subdivision of Master Parcel 3 encompassing approximately 185 acres. The project also includes a Plan Development Permit to allow flexibility in design, addressing setbacks, lot coverage, lot size, and parking standards. To give you a little background, planning for Samoa Town began shortly after the... To give you a little background, planning for Samoa Town began shortly after the town was purchased in 2001 by Samoa Pacific Group. In August 2002, the applicants submitted a master plan for the Samoa Town site, that at the time covered approximately 171 acres of land in and adjacent to the existing town. The plan provided a wide range of uses, including tourist accommodations, retail uses, new and renovated housing, business and industrial uses, historic, cultural, and recreational uses, community uses, and park and open spaces. The coastal commission later approved the Samoa Town Master Plan amendments to the Humboldt Bay Area Plan, which included a number of policies controlling development timing. On May 4, 2017, a CDP and conditional use permit was approved for the future wastewater treatment facility, multifamily housing, and Vance Avenue road improvements. On February 21 of last year, a modification to separate the wastewater treatment facility from the multifamily housing and road improvements was approved by the Planning Commission. In October of last year, a coastal permit and conditional use permit was approved to allow the utilization of the Harbor District's Marine Terminal Two Outfall Line for disposal of treated wastewater. And at this time, the supplemental master environmental impact report was certified that also included this tentative map and other aspects of the Samoa Town Master Plan, which will be the subject of future permits. The current proposal before you tonight is solely for the tentative map and the plan development permit. A coastal development permit and development agreement are conditions of approval and will be presented to the Planning Commission once the Water Board issues a discharge permit scheduled for mid-April, and the Peninsula Community Services District is formed, which is nearly completed. You should note, there are two supplementals in your pack here. The first one is a letter we received today from the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. It requests some investigations and sizing of some water lines. We reviewed that and added this condition that's on the cover page that addresses that that condition or that's concern. And then your second supplemental has some revised conditions of approval that include additional requirements that are identified in the plan development permit and the Samoa Town Master Plan policies, but we wanted to include them in the development plan, so that is included there. Also included are revised subdivision improve subdivision requirements for Public Works, and those were submitted, completed yesterday, or actually today, this afternoon. And the last page of that supplemental two is a letter from the Samoa Pacific Group stating that they've reviewed all these conditions and have no objections to them. So with that, I'll end my report and try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff?
I have a question. I don't know if this is the same subdivision we looked at before where I brought up, this is an extremely hazardous area to place people in a high run-up area if there was a tsunami. And I think before, it was, as long as they write a plan, has there been a plan written on how you're going to get people out of there? I mean, there is no plan, I already know that, but you're placing people in a very hazardous area where they're not going to live if there's a tsunami.
Well, there is a tsunami evacuation plan and plans to develop safe evacuation areas throughout with the process.
There isn't any that you can, other than go up, if you had a very large, you know, very solid, maybe multi-story parking area that you could go up like they constructed in Japan, there is no way you're going to get out of there. In the amount of time you're going to have, if a large tsunami from the Cascadia Fault hits, you're not going to get out of there. And so I'd like to see what that plan is, other than to just hear that there is one or there's going to be one before you place people in there. And if it's going to be affordable housing, I don't know if that's what's suggested that's going to be there, you're going to have people that are very vulnerable, maybe elders and people without, it wouldn't matter if you had a car, you would still not be able to get out of there. The only way you would be safe is if you maybe went up a very tall structure, which I'm not sure we want out there, but I'd like to see what that plan is before I would ever vote for something like this.
See, and then we'll open this up to public hearing. Anybody from the public like to speak on this project?
Good evening. My name's Kathy Moley. I work with Pacific Watershed Associates. I've been on and off this project for the last two decades, and so I'm fairly familiar with the soils, the project, and so I have a couple other items I would like to talk about. But I directly want to talk to Peggy as far as your concerns about tsunami run-up and such. And as a active member of the Redwood Coast Tsunami Working Group, and very familiar with earthquakes and tsunamis on the North Coast, I know that, I believe it was Laco that did a lot of investigations on this property. And when we talk about run-up and inundation, we talk about elevation of the spit and where the waves are going to come up to, where we believe, where they might overlap the spit, which is probably further south. Fairhaven is another area of jeopardy, and even on the South Spit. But we have dunes here and in Manila that are at elevations that there's no evidence of them being overtopped. Having, living in a tsunami inundation zone myself in Fields Landing, evacuation is not the issue getting out of town. It's getting to high ground and being safe at high ground until the waves subside, and then you're able to leave. Samoa is one of the first communities on the North Coast to have been delved a tsunami-safe community. They have an evacuation area where they're going to. They have had regular evacuation drills. And so a lot of the community members in Samoa know what to do when the ground shakes very hard, and where to go if they feel they're in jeopardy of tsunami inundation. So I think those two things together, the fact that there has been investigations by Laco who said, here's the elevations, here's the high ground, here goes where we think tsunami inundation will be in the event of a Cascadia event, and that they have actually conducted drills, kind of, for me, as someone who deals with this stuff, negates my concerns about that so much. My other comments have to do with the community coming together, and the, I have been working for the last 20 years on the overall wastewater disposal of this community. And the proposal, what this tentative map approval will do, will allow them to go forward with their regional, North Coast regional water quality permitting, and moving forward with an overall disposal for not just this community, but probably the peninsula-wide, and the existing wastewater disposal issues need to be improved. So those are my current comments. If you have any further questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
My name is Mike O'Hern. I'm the agent for this project. I've been involved in it since the beginning, 19 years now, and there's quite a lot of history. This project has been to this commission a number of times, mostly different commissioners, actually, because it was so long ago. But it's been here for the new coastal, local coastal program, the change in the county general plan. And then there was the parcel map that allowed the affordable housing, and the affordable housing is actually under construction right now. If you drive out to Samoa, you can see it, it's quite impressive. One of the studies, talking about tsunamis, one of the studies was by Geo Engineers, which is a West Coast expert, company that's an expert in coastal engineering, and they wrote a report about the tsunami elevation, and they picked 32 feet as, well, actually, they picked 30 feet, and then they added two feet, so 32 feet as the safe elevation for residences. And so at the time, the coastal commission questioned the credibility of that, and so the county, based on the developers' financing, hired a peer review, which was some PhD professors at USC, that wrote a report that confirmed that the elevation of 32 feet is a reasonable elevation, where people with residences above that elevation are safe. And so, again, if you looked at the affordable housing projects out there, the first floor is a garage, and then the living floors are above that. So I think while tsunamis are obviously a concern on the coast, that has been addressed in minute detail on this project. As I say, it's been going on for 19 years. There's been planning, probably 10-foot stack of paper that's been produced on this property. I think one of the things to consider that this is truly real estate recycling. This was a former sawmill lumber drawing yard that was completely paved, and that's the area that will be developed. The existing town will be subdivided, 98 homes will be subdivided, but then 200-plus new homes in the area that was formerly lumber storage. And the original proposal when we started this project was to build houses out to the edge of the paving, but due to the wetlands and the esches that were found, 100 feet of that paving is now set aside as a setback area from the wetlands. So it's, you know, reuse of land, but not even reusing all of the land that was lumber storage. I'd like to answer any questions that you might have, and then, as I said, as the applicant said, they're agreeable with all of the conditions of approval, and we ask for your support and vote.
Any questions?
What was the elevation there?
32 feet.
No, that's 32?
32 feet is the safe elevation.
But what is the elevation there? You said 32 is safe, and is that 32? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the residents would be above 32 feet. The ground varies out there. The affordable housing project, the ground was about 20 feet elevation, so that's why they built on top of the, built the garage, and then the residential units on top of that. So the rest of the town, all of the residences will need to be at 32 feet. That could either be fill, or it could be garages under the dwelling units. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I can just add one additional note, Mike O'Hern mentioned the 32 feet. We also accommodated sea level rise projections through the year 2100.
Thank you, Mr. Warner, because that's, I think, the only question about this that had occurred to me, and I forgot to ask it, but, but, you know, given that we've had some presentations on that, it's certainly appropriate that that should be factored in. I honestly am very impressed with this project. I've been aware of it for a long time. I've learned more about it studying this. There's a lot more still to be done. But it bears noting that we have very few opportunities in motion within the county to fulfill some of the affordable housing goals that we have. This appears to be one. It is reusing old industrial abandoned sites, which is another public policy goal. So to me, this this is one that I would like to see go forward.
Do I have a motion?
I'd just like to also add that this also meets the goals. I'm also very impressed with the project, and I think it's much improved, meets the densification goals that have been outlined by the United Nations, and also natural resource goals, John Turbow, E.O. Wilson. I'm a big proponent of densification, and in terms of, you know, even in forest management, you want to have smaller industrial areas, and leaving more of the land to natural landscapes, which is what this project does. So I'm also very happy with the improvements that have been made. And I can make a motion if you.
Agree.
Yeah. So I'll motion to approve the Samoa Pacific Group Final Map Subdivision Coastal Development Permit Plan Development Permit, case numbers FM313003, CDP31030, PDP31001, application number 8827, four assessor parcel numbers 401031055 and 401031070, and make all the required findings for approval for the Final Map Subdivision and Plan Development Permit, and adopt the resolution approving the Samoa Pacific Group project, subject to the recommended conditions.
And can I add, are we including this last supplemental with the six-inch line that was recommended?
Oh.
Just add that in. This is supplemental information one.
Yes, with the additional condition of approval, that Samoa Pacific Group will work with HBMWD on the potential need to upgrade the existing water meter from four inches to six inches, and field verify the size of the lateral pass, the district's meter to be a consistent diameter of six inches, as may be necessary. A letter from HBMWD will be required stating that this condition has been met.
Ed, Trevor?
Through the chair, I'd just like to add that supplemental number two also has additional conditions, so maybe just refer to that.
And refer to supplemental two?
Okay. And with the additional conditions outlined in supplemental number two.
So second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
I'm against.
Motion carries. So with that, that brings us to the end of our projects. I have a question for the director before we go, since it came up a couple times in our discussion. Will we be seeing anything in the near future on the sea level rise plan that we got a glimpse of, I don't know, about a year ago, or eight months ago, whatever it's been?
Yes, we are actively working on that, and that, we do want to get that back in front of the commission shortly. One of the maybe complicating but exciting portions of that is that in response to the coastal commission having been in Eureka in the presentation that was made, the county received a grant to facilitate a working group with all the affected jurisdictions around the bay. And so one of the things we really want to do is see if we can't develop policy solutions and action plans comprehensively, so that it addresses not only Eureka, Arcade, the County Harbor District, Caltrans, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, so that all the people affected by sea level rise that provide services to the public would be part of that dialogue, and part of some kind of decision-making body that would address those things.
Will that include the tribes?
Yes. Excellent.
That's great. With that, I have a motion to adjourn.
Before you do, could I ask one quick question?
Yes.
Which is, in the month of July, we have five weeks. Our normal meetings would be the 2nd and the 16th. The 2nd obviously corresponds very closely to the 4th of July holiday for the county. The 3rd is a holiday. So we do have some flexibility there, whether the commission would like to meet on the normal days, the 2nd and the 9th, or not meet on the 2nd, and only meet on the 9th, or meet on the, or I'm sorry, the 16th.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Thank you. Yeah. Or meet on the 9th and the 23rd. And I'm just giving that to you tonight for your preference. Suzanne is interested. She's taking two weeks off right in the middle of that, so.
Would it, since you mentioned that, would the 9th and the 23rd fit with your plans? Would it, since you mentioned that, would the 9th and the 23rd fit with your plans?
I think it would be the 2nd, and then the following.
Actually, the 2nd and the 23rd would meet with her plans best.
I'm fine with those dates.
And when you say the 2nd Thursday, not the, or are you talking about the 2nd of July?
2nd of July.
Okay.
I don't think I have any problem with 2nd of July and July 23rd, if that's what we're contemplating?
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
2nd of July is fine for me, too. I'm not sure about the 23rd yet, but...
Should we just go with that for now, and?
Sure.
Put that on the plan.
So, we'll plan on it being the 2nd and the 23rd, unless some other strong reason to change that is right up.
Okay.
So, I'm editing the 16th right now. Any other things you'd like?
That's all I've got tonight, and just to reaffirm that we will schedule a workshop on, to talk about signs.
Great, thanks.
Later.
Later.
Thank you. So, now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Motion and a second?
I'll second.
All right, we're adjourned.